Hello. At this point, I should be unmuted. Everybody should hear the meeting. Join a meeting. Meeting ID 762816072. Joining fancy meeting. Passcode is 762. No. Please allow zoom access permission. Hello. Hello. Who sits here, I wonder? Susan?
Yeah, I hear nothing.
I don't think I hear any audio. Can you hear? I'm muted.
I don't hear nothing.
Welcome once again to Lato's Law. Here's.
Can't hear any. We'll have to monitor, we need a monitor here. Put your phones on.
Feedback loop from hell.
I'm thinking, uh, two microphones. Ceiling mount, the hang down.
Yeah.
One in the back, similar towards the back, like halfway, one right here. That are condenser, so they pick up everything. A mixer. With four channels. And a USB interface. Two cameras, that's it. I mean, these, these sound all right.
Yeah.
They're just not aesthetically pleasing, but. We can mount it to the ceiling.
Yeah.
Upside down.
That's what they want.
Agendas. Need to go somewhere and listen to it. Maybe Willie's office. Turn his computer, uh, join a meeting, see if you can hear it good.
Yeah.
Twenty-one. What is today, seventeenth?
Yep.
Small agenda. This patchy's over here.
Yep.
Oh, I want to kill that top video. Nope, it's a quidira. See the agenda. In the agenda folder. Hmm. See the agenda in the agenda folder. I guess I left my Facebook on here all night. It showed me as active all night.
Yeah.
People sent me messages and stuff, and I was like, oh, me.
I've got a better agenda.
It's on there. On the agenda folder.
Yeah.
Yeah. I was pulling one up for Susan.
Shut, pulled up a raindrop, I could see it. Ask Jackie where it was. Looked at me like I was nuts. You know, I wonder if she looked at me like I'm nuts, because there it is. Because I am.
Yeah, that's better. Go ahead and pan it on the top. Talk back there, see if those switches.
I'm talking back here to see if it switches, but usually my voice isn't picked up by audio communications of any kind. Unless it's a condenser mic. Regular. Mics usually don't pick up my monotem voice, because I usually put people to sleep really quickly when I start to talk. That's why I was hired by the religious organization, so that I can keep people in their seats without leaving, because they actually just fall asleep. I don't see it actually, uh, picking me up. Of course, that's pretty common for my voice. I saw a little bit of a change, hope something turned, there we go. How about now? It just can't find me. I think it's might have found me. Is it better now? Maybe I'm just in the middle where it can't see anything. What if I move over here and start to talk? And then I talk, and then I talk, and then it passes me up again. It's trying to find me, but I'm just in that spot. There it is. Hello. You're moving it, aren't you?
Mm-hmm.
Uh-huh.
I want to get it on you, then reset it to auto. There we go.
Okay. Now it, now it's finding me. Oh, look at there.
Fancy stuff right there.
Yeah, that's, that's production quality.
It's looking at me. Okay, it's looking at me through this camera.
Yeah.
When he was talking, it was looking at me through the other.
But I'm talking now, so it should have picked me up and started moving, but oh, there it is. Seeing that I can point myself.
Ooh, look at that. Infinity beyond.
That's why you're the boss.
The meeting has started. Now, does it look like they're working good?
Yeah. I was able to hear, so that's a good sign. I guess I should mute.
Hello.
Mute. Should be able to hear now.
Hello.
Hello, hello. Testing four seven six, four seven six two. Wonder if you're allowed to unmute yourself. Ah ha. That wouldn't stop you from being able to hear.
Might want to copy that invitation and send it to some folks.
I could. Why?
The agenda people?
How come?
I don't think it got sent out.
Yeah.
It did.
Yeah. I, I.
I never got it.
Okay.
But maybe he didn't put me on the list. Join a meeting.
Now shit, it's recording. Ask again, I just want to walk away.
Is there anybody here from the United Way concerning the grant? On Zoom. Unmute.
Yes, good morning. How, how's everyone doing, uh, today? Thank you so much for joining us. My name is Brad Riffey. I'm the Executive Director of United Way of Harrison and Doddrish Counties, and I just want to thank everybody, uh, for participating in today's call. We're extremely excited to explore this community development block grant opportunity and, uh, discuss ways for us to better serve our communities and hopefully bolster, uh, some programs here, uh, to support our citizens. Uh, I'm going to turn it over to Marissa Rexrode, uh, but thank you all very much.
Good morning. Thank you all so much for your time, and we certainly appreciate the county's willingness to act as a sponsor for this community development, uh, block grant. I just want to review some of the eligibility requirements before we get started.
Marissa, I hate to interrupt you, but I probably just need to open the public meeting, so consider it open. Carry on.
Thank you so much. Applications must meet a, a national objective, the eligible activity, and more specifically, prevent, prepare for, or respond to the COVID-19 pandemic. The CAT Office, which is the Office of Community Advancement and Development, has made funding available in the following categories: public facilities, public services, and community planning. Public service projects have an award limit of 500,000. Public facilities projects have an award limit of 1.5 million. Planning grants have no specified size limit. To be considered for this funding, appropriate or path must benefit low and moderate, uh, low to moderate income persons, and the need for the services must be demonstrated throughout the public hearing process. This funding cannot be used to supplant or substitute, uh, programs or services that are currently funded by other sources. However, it can be used to expand services, uh, for programs or projects that are already in operation, um, or, you know, begin entirely new programming that is responsive to the pandemic. Any questions about that?
No.
All right. Um, so we'll start off by, with a discussion of some of the, um, the community needs in Harrison County right now that have been, uh, spurred in some way by COVID-19, or, or may need, may need to be further developed as a response to COVID-19. Is there anyone on the call who wants to highlight a need?
Is there anyone here that would like to speak to this grant that is on, in, here in the commission courtroom or on Zoom? Go ahead. Thank you. Twice?
Okay. So, uh, needs that we have been exploring at United Way through some of our, um, our nonprofit partners. The first need is that, uh, we have talked with the Kelly Miller, uh, building and the folks there who have been working hard to renovate that structure and, um, are interested in pursuing a public facilities piece around, um, constructing and, and continuing to renovate the, uh, Kelly Miller building to be, to be more responsive to COVID-19, and there are a number of ways in which, uh, their programming can be more responsive. So that's certainly one thing that we're, we're exploring. The, we're also exploring, um, with other entities and hope to further explore, um, whether or not we can, you know, i- if there are testing programs in the area for COVID-19 that need to be bolstered in order to continue. United Way will also, um, endeavor to, to look more deeply at some of the food systems issues that we are experiencing here in Harrison County. We see this as urgent for a number of reasons. Um, the first being sort of the economic conditions that were created by the pandemic, um, have led to food insecurity for a number of households. And secondly, because of the closure of the downtown Kroger, we have a number of highly vulnerable groups who are living in housing authority complexes here in Clarksburg, but also just throughout the town, um, who no longer have access to a grocery store and may, uh, lack transportation in many cases. So, um, we are going to endeavor to, to look more deeply at some of these food systems issues and see how we might be able to pull in some of this funding to ensure that folks in Harrison have access to healthy nutritious, nutritious food. Those are the needs that have been identified in conversations that we have pursued thus far. Um, are there any questions about that or any other needs that anyone would like to highlight?
I have none. Anyone?
Okay. Well, I think that that will wrap up the public hearing portion then. Um, our next meeting, we will look at the, the grant that we have compiled and, um, gather community feedback around that and, um, ahead of the submission, and then we'll come back to you all as the county, as the commission, um, for approval of that final grant application before its submission on March 12th.
Thank you, Marissa, and that will close the public hearing unless there is someone that wishes to speak. Okay, consider it closed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comment. Anyone wish to speak to the commission either on Zoom or here? Mr. Hinkle, are you on Zoom? Commissioner Hinkle? Okay. No one wishes to speak publicly. Number two, consent agenda. Okay, motion to move forward. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Jessica, inform me, there are no payroll change notices, no exonerations, corrective tickets, joint application, no consolidations of land or segregations of land. Correct me if I'm wrong.
You're correct.
Okay, number six, I'm not going to read through that, but I do not believe there are any of those as well.
Correct.
And seven?
Correct.
Okay. Now we are going to go to number eight. Review, discuss, consider designating commission representative on the Benin Airport Authority from members appointed by Harrison County Commission. Or did I say that eight? I said nine, didn't I? Number eight, or did I say? Anyways, it's number eight.
Mr. Clerk, please tell us the names of individuals that were sworn in today.
Randy Kearns, uh, Roger Diaz, and Andy Lang.
And they all have their digital signatures, electronic signature.
They do what needs to happen now. The original needs to get sent to the notary, and then she'll put her stamp on it, and then it's official official.
Motion to move forward, those three individuals.
Okay. Motion is made to move forward with those three individuals that were mentioned. They have been sworn in electronically this morning. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carry. Okay, number nine, review, discuss, consider qualifications, education, and certification, follow-ups on committee as it pertains to planning staff. Does anybody have any information on that?
Do you have any false information on the staffers for that committee? Um. I believe it was credentials, qualifications, education.
How did you request to just be on the agenda?
I think it, I believe it was Mr. Hinkle.
I think so.
I believe it was Mr. Hinkle that wanted clarification on that.
There are some of Danny's qualifications. Here's some of them. I've done, um, since here. Lily has a whole bunch of other stuff. But I don't know where his folders are.
Okay. Well, we can help this information to get it to, or get it to Mr. Hinkle, if that's what he's requesting. Get in touch with Lily. I should have received it.
Okay. Motion to receive into the record, the documentation is shorted, presented. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Motion carry. Number ten, review, discuss, consider parking situation regarding commission-owned lots, who is entitled to park? What lot?
President, at this time, can we just assign this over to, uh, Gary Hammer to meet with all entities that are, uh, allowing the parking lot, uh, from the judges to the probation office to Olomback, um, assigned parking, and then get the plan based on seniority, uh, that's not commission-driven. Hey, Gary, can you hear me?
Yeah. Yeah.
Hey, Gary.
Yeah.
Can you, can you grab this, uh, parking lot and, and get a plan together that we base it on seniority? And it doesn't have to be commission-driven. It's important that we, you know, everybody's treated the same. It doesn't matter if it's somebody hired in an assessor's office, or the sheriff's office, or your office, just go by seniority that, so that no one gets skipped over based on seniority, but then also deal with the entities that are, are entitled. Like, I know that Olomback gets some spots now, uh, Family Court gets some spots based by, you know, you know, what, what they're entitled to. So just give us a plan, and then that way, if we have any empty spots, then they're filled.
Okay, yeah, if you get me the, basically, the seniority list from the, you know, from the county employees, and then, and then a list of who's supposed to be in there, and kind of give me the parameters, I can go through that, and I'll go down there and look and see how many spots we actually have, and, and work with Olomback here and, and, uh, the other entities. Yeah, I could, I could do that.
I don't have a problem with at least coming up with a plan to figure it out. And then I think some people were. Well, the state employees will move that. I think, I don't know that I necessarily disagree with that, but I don't agree with it wholeheartedly. I think if you come up with a plan that make, they would, wouldn't be in there before a commission, I mean, a county employee. And I think there's an issue with the county tuition employees jumping the line of the other elected officials. And I don't think that's fair either.
President, if I can say, I mean, just as a, this is not, you know, where, where I've been given this duty, uh, to do this, just as a 20-year county employee, I'll say, you know, over here, I've got 17 employees and only one parks in that lot, and, you know. So I don't know, I don't know how we went about getting, getting those spots, uh, assigned before, but, you know, out of my employees, I know there are people that are more senior than some that are in the lot. Uh, and also, just from parking there over the years, I've noticed there are some, i- it appears that there are some empty spots that we aren't filling, so we just kind of need to do an audit and see who's parking there, how many spots we do, and maybe number those spots so we have a accurate count.
Just remember, Gary, nobody, I don't want anybody booted out that's in there now. That would be correct. But from this point on, you know, if, uh, Rocky's here, if Rocky has a person, or, or, or the prosecutor attorney has a person that has seniority, then they're first in line. You see what I'm saying?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, you just need to go with who's not in the lot, and then do your seniority list from there.
Okay, listen, thank you so much.
Oh, you're welcome.
Get back to us. When I say that, I don't want it to be a year, but, you know, and we'll get you the seniority list.
Okay.
And then, and then the only other thing I want to, we'll find out, and then, President, if you don't mind, and it's, it'll be up to the three of us. I don't, let's find out how much that revenue that parking lot brings us, and I don't know why county employees are parking. Name for parking.
Well, we can look at that once we get a plan.
Okay. You want to move to, uh, make, move to, uh, move forward with Gary coming up, Gary Hammer coming up with a plan?
And then we can get a parking lot planned. Yeah. By, um, Gary Hammer, and come back to the commission at a later time, and we can discuss that. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? carries. Uh, discussion of duties of commission attorney. What do you have for us?
So after the last meeting, I contacted Berkeley County's county attorney, and they just went through a, a new job description, essential task list at Berkeley County. So I requested, his name is Anthony De La Gotti. I requested that he provide me a copy of their county job description. Uh, Mr. De La Gotti did that. I then provided it in turn to the county, and, uh, I felt it was adequate. It was very thorough. It was very on point with what I feel you all need, but at the end of the day, I didn't want to be the one who writes the job description for the, the attorney, which is why I went outhouse for a third-party source to begin with. Uh, but, but what I presented, I felt was fair and adequate, would cover what you all need.
Okay. Do you, where, who did you give that to?
That was forwarded to Mr. Parker and Ms. Sal certainly have it, and.
I'll, I'll get you a copy of what he sent.
Okay. And then the only thing on it, and, you know, I don't ever want to know what prosecutor attorney is like in the courtroom, but at the same time, but anytime, you know, in my opinion, if you need help, there's But at the same time, but anytime, not my opinion, but you need to help third-party to everybody as they can be.
Absolutely. No problem.
And I did certainly invite you all to share that job description with
That's why I say it might be an idea to get the same.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Okay, just for matter of record today. Okay, thank you, Trey. Number 12, review discussed, consider request by Shintel to locate tower to provide internet service to Shinston.
That's me, yes. A few months ago had a, I hate talking with these things. A few months ago had a request from Shintel, they wanted to expand their internet-to-home coverage in various communities. One of the ones that they focused on was Shinston. We've got a tower that's very centrally located. And from that tower site, they think they can provide internet service to between 700 and 800 homes. This would be wireless internet where you have a device that points towards the tower, that kind of thing. Gives an alternative internet connection there. This would be a paid system, a paid service, they would pay rent to be on the tower. Very low footprint. Doesn't, wouldn't cost us anything. They say the rent's running between $700 and $800 a month is what they're paying people to locate on their towers. So it's not like the last one that we looked at. And this is providing service directly to citizens. So it, in my mind, this is the kind of thing we want to do with our tower real estate. We've done site visits, we've done tower studies, we've done a lot of the legwork. We're in the contract writing phase, but I didn't want to go too far forward till I got the blessing from you guys to say, yeah, that's the kind of thing we want to do with our, with our properties, let's move forward.
Madam President, anything we can do to prove?
And, and, and this was right up your alley, yes, sir, I knew that was.
Motion to proceed. Okay, the motion's been made to proceed.
Okay, I'll get the rest of the information to Shintel, they'll get the documents. They've, they've added that they'll get online if they have any questions, but I'm really thinking that it's a kind of a no-brainer. This provides the kind of service we need to provide to people using stuff we already have. Yep, and that's what, and I'm assuming that I'll meet Mr. Trey here when that comes along, okay.
Is he, what revenue would that bring to account?
About $700 or $800 a month, or, yeah, a month.
Yeah, that's fine, as long as somebody can work from home or engineer.
And it doesn't cost them anything for them to do it.
Okay. Okay, the motion is to move forward?
Yeah, allow to move forward and give permission for them to use our tower to increase property.
And come back with a review?
Yep.
Okay, well, that's right.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposition, motion carried.
Just to comment on that briefly, the one, the one issue we need to be careful of when we do contract with them is we want to understand exactly what their uses are, because oftentimes they'll try to acquire expansive uses, and we want to limit them, kind of like a pipeline to one pipeline.
Right.
As opposed to a number of sources.
They'll get this many feet on the tower, and this one's probably on the ground.
Yep.
Appreciate that. Number 13, review discussed, consider Wallace property owned by Lester Persley and Enterprise property owned by Donna Hart. Donation to county commission. Do you have anything on that? Is that you? That's you.
It was kind of a double.
It would be kind of both of us.
Okay.
So I, I kind of requested this agenda item because these are really not traditional in the context of what we've done. And I want to talk about both of them with you specifically. The Persley property is an old bank structure, correct?
Yes.
And we've looked at the demo, we bid it out, the price to demo and remediate is plus minus $100,000. It was something that was on your radar to look at. Mr. Persley is happy to transfer his liability over. We put the hold on him because that's an exorbitant amount. You all have a fixed demolition sum. And we wanted to bring that to you, so you understood kind of why action has not occurred there immediately. So that's Persley. Then the Hart property is the property that Commissioner Treecost had asked about that was falling in on Route 19. We were able to make contact with Fairmont General's counsel. And what happened there, wanted to give you all the picture, is the medical liens on that property were actually technically released, they were just not recorded. There was an error between Fairmont General and Ms. Hart. So I have copies of the releases now in my file. I'm fine to move forward on that with remediation or with taking the property. And that's another point that I want to talk about with you, is kind of what you're all's attitude is. Historically, we've remediated, we've taken demolition remediation liens on a number of parcels. We've also been asked at times to take property. We've always shied away from that because as a body, you guys aren't really in the property holding company type business. But before we go forward with Hart and remediate, I just wanted to make sure, because she's also willing to transfer the property to the county, that's not something you want us to explore.
No, I, I do, I do want you to take the property, I want it cleaned up, and then the assessor sell off the property for whatever he can get out of it. And then just spend any of the property that we're paying.
I think that'd be something we'd have to look into, how we would, yeah, sell it, correct?
Yeah, typically, there's an auction process for property which exceeds certain monetary, certain monetary values, and we can look at that. But if you want us to take the property, we'll go to her, and we'll, we'll let her say we're going to take the property. The liens oftentimes end up being of no value because the properties are not marketable to begin with, which is why they're
But nobody's going to buy them. I'm prepared for the lien.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Please move forward, and then
With taking the property from her.
Taking the property, what would it be, a transfer?
Yeah, it'd be a transfer, she just did it over, then we have title, and we go in and remediate.
And then please go ahead and put a bid out to
The lowest bid we have right now is $12,000.
Okay. I'm in.
Okay.
Motion to move forward with taking, taking the title of the property, Mr. Attorney?
Taking the Hart property, sorry.
Taking the Hart property.
Then let's just go ahead and make the motion, and if she ultimately refuses to that, you want to just go ahead and take the remediation lien approach.
I think she's going to agree.
I think she's going to agree as well.
And then motion to demo, proceeding that up to $12,000.
Okay.
So as a matter of fact, make it up to $15,000 in case there's a hitch. Because that, let's face it, it's, you know, $12,000 is a great bid, so motion to move forward.
Okay, motion to move forward with the Hart property as stated by the attorney and Mr. Treecost, correct?
Please.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? None. Personally, what do we want to, I mean?
One further point I should have shared on personally is, we're looking, I won't interrupt you.
That's okay.
We're looking at rebidding that in the future, because the cost was just so high to remediate it.
It'd be nice to take the funds. And I would, something like that. I might want to have all three commissioners here on that. So we will, we want to table that?
There's, there, there's a possibility, not saying definite, but there is a possibility, you know the guy that's doing the work on the trail? On the North Trail? There's a possibility he might be able to do the same for that property. Just charges for the equipment, the use of the equipment, they would run the equipment. As long as we don't formally advertise that bid.
Like there's a guy that can tell us whatever to do.
Yes.
We're not breaking the rules.
We'll have to look at that, the issue there before you could even consider it, because he did not have his asbestos certification.
We have to wait for him to get that.
And he's going to have to get that before we even consider the option.
Do we want to table this?
Yeah, let's hold on for a minute just for us. Motion to table the Wallace property, Persley property. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? No. No opposition? Motion carried. I meant, no opposition.
We did enter into several other remediation agreements this week with various owners, so we're making some progress.
Good. Okay, number 14, review discussed, consider Roger Diaz's appointment for executive board, North Central West virgin airport.
This will complete all that was requested of us by Commissioner Hinkle three weeks ago. And we want Roger Diaz to be our executive board representative to communicate with us as a good body, as the three of us, as commissioners, so motion to move forward.
Okay, motion to appoint Roger Diaz to the executive board of the North Central Regional Airport. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Opposition, motion carried. Okay. You have any comments?
Only that, you know, my answer.
With the window? I know Mr. Henry was working on a letter with Judge Bittish, I haven't received a copy of it, but I, that's, that's where it falls. Do you have an update for us?
Mr. DeLa.
City window got back with me, and they're able to do it Friday. I'm just in the process of coordinating with the judges to make sure that they don't have any issues. I've got their schedules, but sometimes noise travels, so I'm trying to get that accomplished for Friday. I forwarded that information to Mr. Parker and Ms. Sal, and the only thing I have to find out is from Judge Baddell. I think everybody else is fine. I just need, as soon as I find out from Judge Baddell, I can tell them to proceed Friday.
Great. I don't think I have anything. I may have, but I think I know why you're here. You want to do it now or later.
I want you to do it later, doesn't matter to me.
Okay. Okay.
Motion adjourned, and then
We've got two minutes.
I don't think anyone's here, but
Well, can I just say, welcome to Trey. So I think this is a great move for the county.
Yes.
It's going to be incredibly helpful. This is how we used to do it years ago. And this is how the larger counties go, and just from listening to him talk today, he's going to be unbelievably beneficial
Already have.
to everybody, so, welcome. I'm so glad to have you.
Thanks, Rachel.
Thanks.
So we got two minutes.
Two minutes for motions.
If we're going to do this later, somebody just call me when you guys are ready. What's that?
Did you talk to you, did you talk to her?
I just have the handwritten note for now, so we can chat.
Oh, yeah.
That's okay, call me, doesn't matter.
Okay.
I just want you guys to know I had it.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
You got it, Rachel.
Thanks. Yes, Madam President, I talked to Ken about that.
So none of them are here.
We'll still have to wait till they
Five times each time. Two of them are cleaning up. And they're, they are, they've done quite a bit.
I guess we could get that out.
Yeah.
10:30. Okay, we'll open the public nuisance hearing for Terra Property LLC. Anyone here from Terra Property LLC?
Can we go call them in the hallway?
That you can.
Say we start treating like they're in court, call them three times.
You just want to get them to move around.
Terra Property. Terra Property. Terra Property.
There we go.
Thank you.
Yeah, Trey, you didn't have my voice.
Okay, you wish to speak to Terra Property, what is the?
Terra Properties. Theirs looks like somebody exploded on it. They've sent notices, the first one they did pick up, but after that, they will not pick up any more. I cannot find them. They are based out of Ellenboro. And all I get is a post office box, so I cannot physically find them. And the people that they have living there, I don't know if they're supposed to be living there, or if they're squatting there. It's, it's pretty bad.
Have we checked to find out who is associated with Terra Properties, like through the LLC documents filed with Secretary State?
I've, I've looked as far as I can look. I mean, I don't know how else to go about looking.
Are there any children still?
I don't know.
Is there a meter?
From the looks of it, I don't want to get out.
I agree. So what do you recommend that our next step be?
I'm going to say, I'm going to go to Trey. And maybe Trey can find them. I don't know.
Let me ask you this, would our sheriff's department be able to communicate with Richie County? Is that Richie County?
Sheriff?
I mean, we could make that.
We'll give you what?
I mean, I think you could do a little bit of legwork, somebody could do a little bit of legwork. Let's find out.
I mean, usually I
Do they own property in Ellenboro? Do they, Richie County, I mean, call them up and ask them if they, you know, find out?
I've got a good relationship with the sheriff down there in Richie County. Charlotte, if you'd get me the information, I wouldn't mind at all to, we'll call and see what I can find out.
Okay.
Sheriff.
You're welcome.
So what's our next move with this?
I would say just try, see if I can find them, see if the sheriff
Keep trying to track them now.
And
So we'll leave this open until where we want to
Bring it back next week.
Okay. And then, is that fair enough? Okay. And then we'll go from there, see what the sheriff finds out, and see what else you can find out about who's associated with that LLC. Okay. So we'll bring that one back next week. Now we got to wait till 10:45.
Madam President, we don't have anybody scheduled at 11:30 for border review, but I'll be back at 11:30.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Assessor.
So we want recess until 11?
The next one will what?
11:45, or 10:45. No, I'm not going anywhere.
As a president, do you want me to get Rachel to talk about the
Sure. Probably can explain it to her.
Yeah. Yeah. Terra Property? Yeah. If we find them, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they just bought them on that offset. I want to make a video. Because the president did have a dime. I, I looked, looked, looked for like
There is some good news out of Charleston, some stuff. Supposedly in the judicial committee, they're looking at some legislation to give counties and municipalities more powers to
No, I saw something.
remediate. There's an act this morning, it's called like the Zombie Property Reclamation Act.
We just talked about that.
Yeah, and it's in judicial committee today, so hopefully we get some more teeth to help us. I also sent down some draft legislation to the auditor, which would allow, basically, as part of the tax sale process, properties to be designated as nuisances, and there would be a separate sale process for nuisance properties as part of the tax sale process, and the purchasers would have to be bonded or entered into a remediation agreement with us.
Great, Trey.
So I haven't heard anything on that, but the zombie, it's like Zombie Property Reclamation Act is being done, it's standard to death. Standard to death. But we got to get some better tools. It's like on the municipal side, they have more tools than you guys do right now, especially for homeowners. They have a lot more, but the counties just don't have the same type of powers and ability for like on-spot citations.
There's no funding to go after for us.
What's that? Yeah. There is some money out there for the municipalities on the grand side to clean stuff up. I just thought, Sheriff.
I mean, do we need, does somebody need to reach out to the auditor to see or?
He'll call. I mean, I've talked to him very. Once in a while, I think he'll give us an update. More tools, the better. Especially in like the, I mean, you guys don't have the aging municipal infrastructure, but it's very difficult there.
Did you understand the differences in those codes? The codes for the nuisance?
Yeah.
We just didn't want to have to form another board and have to deal with another board. This, this is working. I mean, it's.
Slow.
It is slow.
That's. But it's our only way to do it.
Yeah. And I, I don't think the other way, you're going to get. I don't think you're going to get anything more. I mean, you know, you can fork and fees, but you're not going to get the fees.
You just end up increasing the remediation lien value, but at the end of the day.
Doesn't matter how much you lien it, you're not going to get it.
Right.
Yeah. That's how everybody, it's a public entity, shouldn't have to insure people's property, but that ends. Basically what we're doing. Take care of people's property.
Which area, oh my God, they can't even have dirt out to that Old Mill Farm offhand. The infrastructure, have you been there?
I, I haven't really been down there to look around, but they can't harvest any.
Listen, you're taking your life in against a call, says Miss Pizza.
I don't, right? They never come out of it.
But I mean, I guess it's going to be, I mean, W Medicine?
Law. Law.
Law. W Medicine's been in the old hunting combat.
And are they putting an O T there too? Because I'm pretty excited about.
It's on the right side all the way in.
Yeah, I'm pretty excited about that.
Well, all these kids, you have.
Yeah, I, I always go there first. They don't have everything I need, so I'm pretty sure. Yeah, I hit them up first and then get what I can get there.
She wrote that at the bottom. And it's not her.
That first term is.
Yeah.
Somebody stopped.
I think that big curb thing that they put in there, oh. My husband's done this, I've hit it several times, like, because people guess it. And then, yeah. And I'm like, oh, remember that big thing? They're out at the end.
There you go. It's, it's. I don't understand how it makes sense to compress people until fewer hours. You'd say that's going to help with the.
I don't either.
Let's fit everybody in there at the same time.
Well, I, I think maybe it was because of how a lot of people work.
Yeah.
So they had to cut some of the hours because they didn't have anybody covered.
It's interesting how they get people, how they run their raps. That is a real issue that she writes in there.
Yeah. Yeah. Dude, I've been flashed every time. Not big.
Some parts were interesting, other parts were painstaking. But. Yeah. That's.
I'm hard saying there's important getting people actually.
Yeah. Yeah. I think the part that really, really, really seem in print is. The relatives being able to. To buy more than four. Because we, we have so many of them. I'm glad, I'm sorry. So we try to tell them ways to get around that. But. Hazel has been working on this since August. She has all the recommendations. She has waiting lists. She has tag numbers, basically. So she has been working on what we just asked Gary to do. If you want him to work with her, I just don't want him to start from scratch. She's already.
Please call him and tell him.
Yeah. I just want to be a part of this. This has been in the works. It's just. Right. Right. I mean, we've got a waiting list and, you know, so, okay. So I'll just have. Go to it with Gary. Go Gary, get it. Okay. Yes, she has.
Okay, ten forty-five. We opened a public nuisance hearing for Timothy M. Kendall from Mount Clare area. Ms. Schaefer. Do you want to, do you want to go see if Mr. Kendall is here?
You're going to hell again, don't you? Timothy Kendall. Timothy Kendall. Timothy Kendall.
Thank you again, sir.
Timothy Kendall is right across the street from Terra Properties. He's actually cleaning up. He's done a lot of work.
Is this still, when was this taken?
Yesterday. Though the last pictures on the file, that's yesterday.
Does anybody live? Does Mr. Kendall live there?
Yeah. It was his father and his father passed. So now he's taking over and he's trying to get it cleaned up.
So are you saying that we can move this down a little bit longer?
Yeah.
How many days do you think we need to?
I would say at least another month.
Thirty days is what I was thinking.
Yeah. He's, he is working really good with it. Every time Linda goes by, she sees more and more garbage bags and then she goes back and then garbage bags are on. So he is working. He is.
Move this down the road another thirty days? Okay?
Yeah. I shouldn't have to bring this back to the. On the March seventeenth meeting.
Okay, motion to bring back. Mr. Kendall's issues on March seventeenth. That's the basis. One thirty days. Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Madam President, we have time. Do we have the backup initial comments?
Sure. Thank you for sending us the job application for the engineer. Could you then give that to Hayes, one Jackie to go ahead and help? What would be best? Zilla?
I have Zilla's.
I'm not Zilla. Thank you, I'm sorry. I'm watching.
Well, should that be on the agenda to accept that? Should it be on the agenda?
I've put it on the agenda to accept it, yeah.
Oh, next week?
Yeah. And also we can talk about then how to publish it. I don't know what y'all done historically, but we got to try to be consistent and try to push the stuff out there.
I think when we do it now, it'll be the first consistency we've ever had. And we'll follow that pattern from this point on. So. So will you make sure that's on the agenda next week, please?
So let's make sure the agenda is. Let's make sure we, we get it all on the agenda. One, to receive it.
Accept it.
Accept it.
Publish.
And publish it. And then to put a.
Deadline.
Deadline of. Let's think about this. Work with me, everybody. And this will be on the twenty-fourth. So a deadline to get your application in, in the third and start interviewing then on the tenth.
That's quick.
That's quick? Okay, so get your applications in on the tenth.
Might give at least two weeks.
And then start interviewing then on the seventeenth of the twenty-fourth.
Either one.
Seventeenth. Okay, so the motion is to receive, accept and. Advertise a deadline of the tenth of March. Begin interviewing the seventeenth of March.
I do. You had?
Yeah, I just, I can't believe I'm here.
I mean, Brian May is still in the works, right? We still need to.
He, he is also working on it.
Where's this?
Oh, these are all in there. Probably all a half mile apart.
Are they near Children's?
Children's is a little further down the way. Yeah. Maybe it's moved out about fifteen, twenty cars. He's still probably want to go to. Makes up. I don't, I don't. Like when you go by, you think it's like a car lot or something. And it's like.
Coming in from the back way.
Really?
Yeah.
He, he was not happy with us.
The pages, all like card pages.
Gary Hammer, you still on there?
I'm here.
Happy birthday.
Oh, thanks.
How old are you, Gary?
Fifty-one. Fifty-one.
One. Sorry about that.
I should take care of that.
Did anybody figure out how to switch her camera around? Yeah. She had to sit down and record it with her cellphone the whole time.
It was easy, please. Thank you for helping us out.
That's the second time we've had to do it in one process. Yeah.
I think there's a bill in there. I think I saw something about. That won't.
Make it permanent.
Yes.
Be the way of the world someday. I mean, it's starting now.
He'll be here and say.
This really moved it all.
I sometimes ask myself, even to your old boy, will he ever go to physical school?
Are we going to have any more snow days?
No. Snow days are down for you. They won't know though, so they won't miss it, I guess. Or snowbird. That was a thing when we were little.
Yeah. When you were. Right. You would have thought we would have had this much. Who would have thought we would have this much?
Charlotte.
No, I know.
Is that Danny? They have a good relationship.
I know. Yeah. Yeah, the only, the only one that really drives us crazy is, um, he, uh, you know. He, he called us long sweetie, trying to get around. Like did we go through the same smell? And then he tried to tell me that-
It looks awful. It looks really good.
Because he was that, um, he's never gotten anything from us. These people never work with me. Questions, let me know. Thanks.
Brian, Master May. Mr. May. Mr. May. Mr. May.
You wanna do it?
No.
You do such a good job, she said.
Brian May. Brian May. Brian May.
No, Brian May. Thank you, sir. Okay. We will open the, did I already say that already? Of the hearing fourth. I did, I'll do it again. Brian May, 11 o'clock. Charlotte?
He is cleaning up. Danny says we should probably give him another thirty days.
Motion to give Mr. Brian May, also on the 17th of March of this year. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? No opposition? Okay, motion carried. All public hearings are now closed. We want to recess. We can adjourn, yeah. Okay. Motion is made to adjourn the County Commission meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.